Up next, we have a motion to vote and a vice consent for all the person for Ward Three. Ross Workman moved out of his ward and has moved into a different ward, so he was unable to continue that. And so I have appointed Kim Porter to serve. To get a little bit of background, Kim is a teacher with Taylorville Schools. She has served as an alderman back a few years ago, it was prior to me coming into town, so she's got experience with the council. And she's agreed to serve in his replacement. So I'd like for you guys to make a motion and vote to order it.
I'll make the motion.
You got a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep. Alright, congratulations, Kim. So if you want to stand up here, we'll just warn it.
I, Kim Porter.
I, Porter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderperson.
The duties of alderperson.
Best of my body.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we're going to have an ambulance equipment demonstration. Want to bring the notes?
So we, they, our tip money was used to buy a Lucas device for the assumption ambulance. And so I wanted to bring the device in. We had not been trained on it yet, but of course, our wonderful paramedic Alex Stringer has. And so I wanted to bring him in and have the device for you guys to look at the device and see what a Lucas device is and how it's going to help our ambulance. Alright. Center? Yep.
Pause, pause.
I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Hey, Alex, can you explain to people how many times we've had to do CPR or?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so in the last approximately two years, we've had almost 13 cases of cardiac arrest in our fire district. So about 13 times in a little over two years, we've had to do manual CPR. Has anyone done some manual CPR here? Is it strenuous?
Yes.
It's very difficult.
Yes.
At the very best, you will do 30% of what our hearts are doing now, at the very best. Okay? Thank you guys for having us. We're here to just describe the Lucas Three, which we were graciously approved for through you guys. Thank you, we appreciate that. We're just going to explain it real quick and demonstrate so you guys can visually see the benefit from this machine. This machine is one of the only new ones in probably a 40 or 50 mile radius, so we're extremely lucky to have this. This is a Lucas Three. Tower Hill has one and Muequa has one. They're a little bit older, same concept, but now we have one, okay?
Want me to raise that up so you can see?
Yeah, go ahead and raise that.
I'll lower it because I'm really.
Oh, yes, sure. Okay, so what this machine is, is a chest compression system. It's made by Stryker. What it does is it replaces manual CPR. I'll just set it up right here. I'm just going to show them how it sets up first. That's how it clicks on, okay? There are a few restrictions to this. Very small pediatric sized patients, you need at least about six and a half inches per chest size. And as you can see, this is almost all the way up. We had it on a 350 pound patient and that was about the max. Okay, so there are some restrictions to this machine. The benefits are decreased interruptions, okay? So you will see, the reason we brought the stretcher and backboard in, you guys will see how difficult it is when you have a cardiac arrest patient, how much, how many interruptions are when you move them. What happens when you interrupt CPR?
No flow.
No flow. You lose that pressure that you have built up manually. Who remembers pumping water out of a well? Did the water instantly come? No, you had to build that pressure. Every time you stop CPR, you lose blood flow and oxygen to your brain and to your heart. It's extremely important. These machines are what helps people survive out of hospital cardiac arrest. Okay, it's very simple. Okay? So it's very simple to use, there's a two-piece, we've got a nice carrying case right here. It turns on in an instant. What you do is you set this. If you go too far, it'll let you know that that is too small of a patient, so you can bring it up to whatever range you are. Okay? So Candy, we'll put this guy in there. We're going to show you how this works first, and then we're going to show you on the stretcher and how we would approach a cardiac arrest if somebody were to go down here. Okay? These straps here are for the patient's arms. So we've got it set, it recognizes it, you'll hit the start button, and it'll start. This has a lithium battery, it'll run for 45 minutes straight. The nice thing about this machine, as you guys will see, is when you roll patients, when you hip patients, there is no interruption in blood flow. Okay? Any of those people who have seen or have been on an accident or a medical device, you see there's tons of interruptions. Who's ever been on a stretcher doing CPR? How safe is that? Very unsafe. So if anyone wants to volunteer to get on this thing, go ahead and raise it all the way up. Get on this, try to do mechanical CPR as we roll you out of the bomb well, across the sidewalk and into the ambulance. How effective is that? It's not. Okay? The reason we brought this equipment is so you guys can see how effective this machine is. Okay? So we have two batteries, one will stay in, we've got an AC charging board, and if for some reason something would happen, we can plug you into our ambulance and we'll continue to go. Another neat thing about this is that these can be transported to the hospital, but in severe situations, let's say a patient's got an extensive cardiac issue and they go down in cardiac arrest, where does that patient probably need to go? Springfield. It's 60 minutes for us to drive from here to Springfield. Lights and sirens don't make it go any faster. So if we utilize an air ambulance, it's about 15 minutes. These can go in air ambulances. Let's say we get the patient back, Matt's the provider, he does a good job, we get a pulse back, everything's looking good. We're going down, we hit the Walker Bridge, then what happens? They fail. We hit, they lose a pulse, we start it. Okay? This will stay on the patient until we get them to the medical area. Questions on that? Yes?
To break the ribs, like your?
It will. It will.
Go CPR.
Yeah. It's a minor side effect, but it will. In the past, when we needed the Lucas device, we would ask for Muequa or Tower Hill to bring theirs. So they, so we have like one in the middle now, so.
This is awesome. I'm glad to be here, Chris.
Yeah, it's a huge deal. The other thing, obviously, this has a computer with an actuator, it senses everything, it's 60% more effective, they've done all the studies, which is awesome. The other thing is that, how many people are usually on an ambulance? Not here in assumption, but on most ambulances, how many people?
Two.
Two. How difficult do you think it is to run a cardiac arrest with two people? It's extremely difficult, it's actually not very effective at all. How often do you do CPR?
One of them is driving, correct?
That's correct, ma'am. How often do you switch CPR with two people? Every two minutes. It's exhausting, okay? We, we have areas in our county that, in our district, fire district, that there is a delayed response time by the time we get out there. We cover a large area. Okay? So these tools are extremely important. If somebody were to go down, we start manual CPR. We get this out, as soon as we get this on, you can see it's a set it and forget, we have to make sure it doesn't slide down either way. We usually make a black Sharpie marker on here, and that way during transport, we can visually see if it moves. Okay? And it also has Wi-Fi capability and? Yeah, I actually, today, so today I hooked it up to our online account. It has Bluetooth and Wi-Fi, and what that does is it downloads the report, which sends it to our email, we can print out and we can give it to the facility and the provider, especially, especially if there's a higher survival rate, they want to know that information. Okay? It helps the cardiologists, the electrophysiologists, when they're dealing with post care in those patients. Okay? Questions?
Shut it off automatically, or you have to manually shut it off?
No, you have to hit the pause button, and then there is a power button, you can manually shut it off. If it slips off, there's a readjust button here that allows you to move this back. Let's say it were to slip down, and so you can manually readjust it, and then you would just hit the start button again.
Takes the pressure off. As soon as you leave it, once it's on there, it's going to continue to keep pressure downward until you get that back.
Sorry, I didn't mean to block you.
Is the machine capable of telling the person his heart?
No, that would be the cardiac monitor and IV. Questions? Thank you. We're going to, we will, we're going to do it one more time, just put them on the stretcher and we will leave, like we're leaving, just so you see how it works. Matt, you want to put them on the floor?
Okay.
Yep, we're going to do it one more time, then we'll get out of here. Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Glad to help you out.
What's something like that cost, Alex?
What's that?
What's something like that cost?
$18,500.
It's worth it.
It is worth it.
And we also have the monitor.
We have our cardiac monitor, which we purchased in 2019. That was around $35,000. We decided to purchase that. What that does for us is allows us to provide paramedic level care when we have paramedics on duty. Without that monitor, we would be basic life support only, which is good. It's the majority of the calls, but there are times when you need an advanced level provider. And it used to be, before, we would wait on an ambulance from Decatur or Hana, and if we have, we got three medics on, one in school, somewhere, he just left. And so we're recruiting people so that we can provide that higher level of care. And one, one thing, when I first got onto the ambulance, I never realized that there's a BLS and an ALS, and when you're not in the medical field, you don't really know that stuff. So it's what that means for our community, is that we have paramedics on duty in this town that turn, that turn our ambulance from a basic unit to a advanced life support, instead of us having to do an intercept. So we get dispatched, they say, are you ALS or BLS? If we have a paramedic on duty, then they have all of their drugs and everything in the locked cabinet, and then we are now, now an ALS unit, and you do not have to wait for an intercept. I mean, we're good basic, but we're, we can be ALS too, which is fantastic, you know, and we have.
We know how blessed we are to have.
We have three paramedics. Yeah, Mike DeClerc, Tricia Lorenz, and myself. We have one intermediate, Craig Reed, who is essentially is a paramedic level care, it's an intermediate, but most, for most calls, it provides that advanced level of care. And that's usually your IDs, your medications, your advanced procedures.
I ask that question on purpose because kudos to the city.
Absolutely.
But don't name that tip money.
Yes.
Yes.
That's kind of.
And that's going to be a risk. Every member in town or out of town.
Yesterday. Yeah, and it's, it's really like insurance. We don't want to have to use it, but it's good to have it, absolutely. There are times when it's Matt and I on, and I mean, I'm, I am telling you, when you free up a set of hands and you're working a critical situation, it's a huge deal. And that is really more of a rule EMS thing. By the places I've worked, there's, there's five guys holding flashlights and all this other stuff, you have all this help of hands. That's not the case. So it is, the more hands you can free up, the better. And he's getting ready to hold an EMR class. Yes, first responder class, EMR class in Stonington, so.
Anybody who wants to do it.
The information is online, 10 classes, 52 hours. You will be a state licensed emergency medical responder.
And that's starting when?
June 17th.
He'll be in scouts.
Yeah.
He's from our working scout camp.
So, okay, so we have a patient down, we'll just run through this and then we'll get out if you guys don't have anything for us. So as we walk in, patient's unresponsive, let's say when you guys started CPR, go ahead, Matt, start CPR. Candy, let's get the Lucas out. We've got a patient who's unresponsive. Let's get this slid under here. Matt, keep doing CPR until we get this clipped in. Okay, let's go ahead and pause. Thousand one, thousand two, one thousand three. Go ahead and start the Lucas. Thousand four, one thousand five. About a five second delay there, we want to keep it under 10 seconds. Candy, you want to get the feet to the board, let's get this patient loaded. Matt's going to use the airway device. Hey, you, you know EMS, come on over, let's help pull this patient, please. Can you roll him towards you so we can slide the board under? Okay, and let's slide him on. Meanwhile, CPR is continuing. Two people on the feet, please, I'll get the head, let's lift them on to the stretcher. One, two, three. CPR is continuing, no interruptions. We're not going to seatbelt them in. Go ahead and go up. If anybody wants to jump on the manual CPR, we'll be on life insurance. And we go up, no interruptions in CPR. You guys have questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, up next, we've got the engineer, Ron Legner, update.
Tough act to call, Ron.
Yes.
So, I guess for ongoing construction, we have the sewer project is still proceeding every day, and it's going, going well. We're also doing a water main replacement project. Several areas have been completed, where the water main portion has been completed and operating permits have been obtained, and they're, they're going through and hooking up services now. So that's the water main and the sewer projects. The water treatment plant project is the big thing for tonight. I've, I've given several handouts here, there's a letter that talks about the bids, there was five bids received, with the lowest base bid of $4.922 million. It's verdict plumbing and heating, who built the, actually built the Muequa plant that's very similar to this one. There was two, or three alternates asked for, and two of those are, were recommending approval. The, to do concrete pavement in lieu of asphalt pavement would cost $1,100 more, which seems like a no brainer. And the other item is, there's a Cummins generator versus a Caterpillar generator. The Cummins generator is actually $5,500 cheaper, and the city also already has a service agreement for Cummins generators that they already own. The total price with, with those two alternates, the concrete and the Cummins generator, and 3% contingency, engineering is a little over $5.594 million. No, it's 4.9. 4.9. $4,918,660. So that's the construction cost, but with engineering, if you look on the second page, there's contingency money added, and then engineering. So that makes the total project cost $5.594 million change. You've all, you've got a commitment from, from CPF grant funding, which is $1.965 million, so almost $2 million off through the grant. So that, that leaves a net, or a total loan amount of $3,629,693.50. And then the next little table here on the front page just compares the total, the three total loan amounts with the borrowing ordinance, which authorizes the council to borrow money. The, the total borrowing ordinance is $6.5 million, and the, the total of the three loans with contingency would be $6.320 million and change. So the next page just outlines, kind of summarizes the numbers. It's $4.922 million for the base bid. If you add the $1,100 and 5 cents and the $5,500 credit, you get $4.918 million. $147,542 in contingency money, that's 3%, which the EPA allows on their loans. Engineering and planning is $279,000, which you've already paid for. And then the construction management is $250,000 that we provide a person onsite and other assistance in processing paperwork and so on. So that gives a total project cost, again, of $5,594,733.50. That gives you a total loan amount of $3.629 million. The good news is on Monday, the EPA issued their intended use plan, and this coming year, they're, they're offering 80% forgiveness of the loan. So with 80% forgiveness, and, and it's been 50% forgiveness for several years in a row, so that's an increase. The, the city qualifies for it, so that by using the budget period, which starts in July, you'll get $2.903,754.8 in forgiveness. So you're getting, the net loan amount would be approximately $725,938 after all that. So.
It's not bad.
It's a pretty, a pretty, pretty good deal, I think. The payments on that, they're offering 1% interest because you qualify with a hardship rate based on the MHI, so the payment would be $40,138 per year for 20 years. And the last paragraph just points out that, you know, we don't have a loan offer yet, but I have emailed the loan manager multiple times to do the best I can to make sure you qualify for all of this. So I did hand out a five-year projection that we did our best put together, and this is something that EPA requires on their loans. It's, shows the last three years of audits that we had access to, and then based on those three years, we show the next five years and try to project revenues and expenses. We use 2% per year inflation rate for the expenses, and the, I highlighted in yellow the rate increases, which your normal rate increase, I believe, is 3% per year. There is, we are showing that you would need some more revenue. I would encourage you to, you know, review this in, in more detail before acting on any rate increases, but we showed just spreading three rate increases out over three years, which in this, in this example would be 7% one year, 8% and 8%. So three years in a row, that's something you could probably look at and look at your cash balances and maybe spread that out over a longer period and have smaller increases, or you could, you know, get all the pain over with in one year. But the, the idea is, if you look at the bottom row on the spreadsheet, debt service coverage ratio needs to be greater than or equal to one. So the EPA wants your operating income, not including depreciation, they want that to be equal to or greater than, of course, your payments. So depreciation is not a cash thing, it's just a paper thing, so they don't include the depreciation. So we're showing two payments. One is your water main loan, which you may have one payment start in fiscal year 2025, which is the current fiscal year. And then in '26, you would have two payments, so they're, you pay semi-annually. So that, the total of those, of the water main payment per year would be approximately $43,841 per year, and that, that'll be a 20-year loan. And then the, we're showing the new water treatment plant loan, starting in fiscal year 2027, which would end, you know, at the end of April in 2027. So that payment starts then, and it's $40,138 per year. And the idea is that year, you would have exactly the one, the debt service coverage ratio of 1.0.
What was the interest rate on that?
1%.
Still 1%?
Yes.
Just, I just want to double check, because there was, when we talked about this at all committees a few weeks ago, there was quite a few people asking. When we were looking at this three weeks ago, we were looking at $58,000 every six-month payments towards this loan that's now been able to be dropped down to $140,000. Because we were looking at almost 100 and, was it 114,000 a year that was going to have to be the total payments? So, I mean, this is like.
Good news.
A fraction of what we were looking at three weeks ago. I mean, that's, just so everybody realizes the numbers we were looking at were not my friends. So, it's a huge.
Thank you, Ron.
Yes, thanks very much.
So I guess what we're asking tonight is that for the board to approve issuing a notice of attempt to award. I, I gave everybody a copy of the document. What it, what it basically says is, is it's a document to verdict plumbing and heating. You're hereby notified that your bid will be accepted contingent upon Illinois EPA and US EPA approval for items in the total amount of, and it gives the total of the base bid with the two alternates that we're hoping the board will consider, so.
Quick, Gary, sign it.
Well, first off, boys, just go ahead and we'll just jump to that item, we'll take a motion to approve the bid for the water treatment plant. That is for verdict plumbing, heating, and, is there any motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right.
That's dry.
And is there any discussion?
Dry.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, I'll sign it right here. There you go, Ron. All righty, uh, do you want to say anything for the motion to approve the Shastain's engineering contract qualification?
So we looked at that and. So that was, the idea was that our original contract didn't include the grant administration costs. And I thought, well, we could add that to the engineering contract for this project and get it incorporated in with the loan. However, I have been in contact with Jasmine at the EPA, and she said that wouldn't be loan eligible anyway. So I decided it wasn't really worth it at this point to modify the contract to cover that cost. It wouldn't be loan eligible anyway, so we could bill that separately as part of, under an advisory con, or advisory invoice or. We estimated it might be as much as, I think, fourteen thousand dollars or so in administrative costs over the next year and a half. Hopefully, that's a high estimate. I don't, you know, I'd be spread out over a couple of your, basically your fiscal years. So I guess I'm not asking at this point for any contract.
So you don't, you don't want us to, want us to skip over that?
Yes.
Ready, up next, I'll give the motion to approve the sanitary sewer project. Is, is these payments, okay, this is for the Petersburg pay request, which is two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. And the loan dispersment for two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents for a total of five hundred and thirty-two dollar, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Have a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
There you go, second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the lead service project. That's for the Petersburg pay request. It is for thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents. We also have a loan dispersment for thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-three cents. Motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Ready, next, we have a motion to approve the non-led water main project. That's for Petersburg pay request. That is for ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And then we have the loan dispersment for a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for a total of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a second, so I can, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
All righty, next, we have a motion to approve the Shastain invoices. It's invoice number six eight eight six dash five four sewer separation phase two. It's for nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents. And then invoice number seven six four four point oh one dash two three, water improvements, design and construction, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Invoice number seven six four four point oh two dash one five professional, professional services, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Invoice number seven six four four dash four seven, water improvements for the water plant addition, eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents for a total amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents. Motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the final budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
One second.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I forgot to mention, so there's two budget periods involved with EPA. One is the current 2024 budget, which was the, the numbers Gary was talking about was based on that. And that would only be fifty percent principal forgiveness and so on. So we're gonna wait for the 2025 fiscal year, which starts July first here, and just in a few weeks. So the EPA will want us to tell them that, that we're willing to bypass the funding for this current fiscal year, which is the fifty percent forgiveness and so on, in favor of doing the loan out of the next fiscal year, which gives you the eighty percent principal forgiveness. So I just, if, if you see some correspondence on that, I.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Now, this will be ordinance number eight one nine, and it is our, our annual budget. I do want to kind of say a few, few little things. Gary and I had actually talked about this, you probably saw it in the news, about a one percent sales tax that's going to be going away, that is through the, through the state. That is, however, it will not take effect until January of 2026. Now, with that being said, and I don't think it's a problem for us. I, I honestly say we should just leave, you know, once it's removed, leave it removed. Bigger communities, Springfield, Decatur, Champaign, you know, that get all this extra one percent, one percent sales tax from groceries, that will affect them. I, I think if we just, you know, left it as is, let the state remove it, our groceries would be a little bit cheaper than other places. So with that being said, if in fact there is ever a time, we will have the option to raise that. And we can do that as an open vote, we don't need to do a referendum. So non-home rule communities can do that, but we can't do anything until after 2026. So I want to put that kind of out there, that was some things I was trying to discuss through. IML was the one that lobbied really hard to get that changed. The original intent was for, you know, it started back July first. However, communities such as, like I said, bigger communities that rely on that one percent, wanted to kind of do a gradual phasing on that. So just kind of, maybe a little, put it on the radar. I don't see it being an issue for us. Probably at most, we get twenty thousand dollars off one percent. So anyway, but some things, there was an increase that we saw, such as the video game gaming. It's been updated up to about thirty thousand. Income tax, I think it's been a little bit down, it's a hundred and ninety-one thousand. But I also did put in thirteen thousand to help with our roof over at City Hall. As you know, we're having some issues with our roof in one corner. Hopefully, I, you know, if it costs more than thirteen thousand, hopefully it doesn't. But that's something that we have at least appropriated for that. Kind of into streets, as we all know, I mean, Gary has, you know, stayed well within his budget. The fat police, we did lower the salary down by about six thousand dollars. However, there was some give and take in some other areas. By increasing, I believe that it was the staff training and then also some things for miscellaneous expenses. So the reason that it went down was when we did our budget last year, we didn't know how much we were gonna be paying out for the school resource officer. Now that that, that figure has come in and that we're getting money back from the school, that has kind of helped us with that. So we also did, you know, put in money for a squad car, which we'll discuss that later. And then he's also got, still got twenty-two thousand, five hundred for ARPA. Parks were still sitting pretty good with our money in there. I mean, you can see, one thing I do want to say before I go out, get Rainbow on too much, thank you to Stephen and his group. I met with him yesterday, and he had an intern, Chelsea, and we went through and he basically made sure that everything added up. And there's a few things to ask some questions on in regards to the water wastewater, it all got lined up good. So I want to thank him and his crew for helping me and helping us get that done, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes. TIF is, you know, as you well know, it gets a little bit with the subdivision, so I'm gonna find that here, we'll. Just to kind of explain some things.
Even I have a place, and you're talking about waterways and all that.
Okay.
You've seen it, Dan just went down to see it, supposedly, this was been this big, big meeting, and nobody knew that was about afterwards, about how it's wishing out my property down in that.
The, the attorney and I actually talked, so I have no, no meeting, nobody invited me to a meeting or anything.
I got it on my calendar, that's.
Oh, okay.
And my son, he took all that dirt that was gave to his, by fusion, and put it out, little level, everything, guess what? It's going into that ditch, it's even making drainage spots. What are we supposed to do? It keeps on taking my property, going up to my air conditioner, my porch, tearing at my back porch sidewalk, lifting it up. Can't you do something about that? Like she said, man, uh, the natural waterway.
Yeah, I was, I was told with it being a natural waterway that we couldn't do anything to change the flow, move the flow or.
Well, so I, I had a conversation with the attorney about this yesterday because I, I've been told a lot of different things as well. It is a natural waterway, you can't mess with it. I've, you know, been told you can't compete water. We even talked about that it could be marked as a state waterway through the Department of Natural Resources or even IDOT. And if that's the case, we could probably even maybe work with the state to help, get something like that. So you want to go ahead and add?
Yeah, I, we're looking into it, I, you know, I, it was on my list from last month when we met on this. I haven't had a chance, I did some follow-up on it, but I will try and get something more definitive by the next meeting.
Because I, I was honest with you, I don't have an answer, I, I really don't know.
But one time you could put like that big rock along there. I'd be happy with that, who cares? At least I still have my dirt, my grass. I mean, my son would hold on that, he can go down there and look how nice it looks. And then foot just still going down into a stupid ditch. I'm not kidding, oh, see all the grassy bits down in there.
But, but I know, you know, another instance, we had an issue with somebody getting cornstalks. And they, they had some.
Wait, that came way different.
But I'm, but I'm using that because it's still part of that waterway.
Yeah, because the farmers weren't doing their job and walking off like they should, keep the water away, which made all the crap go. I got pictures of when it rilled it, like the, the all way.
That drainage district starts south of Old Castle, runs south of town, past the dirt pile, and goes north of town into Big George. That's a drainage district for several farmers, they taxes into that.
Let's see how many men George knew.
Right, and it goes right through town, it always goes along the bike there. But you've got a bigger battle to fight. As a lawyer, you've got a drainage district involved.
We have talked about, we used.
And you have to play by the rules when it comes to drainage districts, I'm on four of them.
Yeah.
And even the state has to play by the rules.
What are they gonna do with this? So it's about this, this wide of the moon, that ditch. Yeah.
We, we face the same issues when you get.
There's property, and that skinny little thing comes by and gets all up in there. And my neighbors, you could see that one time where it flooded, they're like, cornstalks, it still has one of them.
You get the storms that we've had the last three years, four inches in a, in a quick amount of time. There's no place where to build with that, I mean, it's a natural disaster. The, the ditches weren't designed for that. But that's what we're dealing with now. Global warming, or whatever you want to call it. That is in a drainage district.
Pay taxes on my fault.
And we pay taxes on ours, I mean, it is in a drainage district.
Why you guys didn't end up with it?
I don't know, I mean, there, there's.
No, 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 Kurt, you're absolutely right, I, that's exactly, I didn't know how to respond, I mean, we're looking at this.
Yeah.
I just don't have an answer, I really don't.
Your answer type, because there's more than one issue.
That's exactly right.
Drainage district.
And I, and I've met with one of the members of the drainage district, I had a conversation with him at church about it, and he's, he told me, exactly what Kurt said, there's nothing you can do about it.
In a drainage district, we can't tax the millions about the, everything east of Route 51 dumps into our drainage ditch, it goes into Fangirge. We can't tax you. But we have forty-six farmers that we have to look out for, that they do pay the taxes on it. Every district's set up that way. And I'm not here negative against anybody, I'm just saying, there's the fight you got, it's a big.
So can't they dig that out, make it deeper like they did? See, I made it chilly, um, and it's been twenty-three years, they came and dug it out.
See, that, that, I don't know who did that. Because I was told it was not the city, and I was told that that was the property owners that did that. I, I, that I don't know, I mean, do we have records that can go back twenty-three years roughly?
I think, I think the city hired Hudson to do that.
Did they?
I, I believe, I don't know that for sure, but I think the city hired Hudson some summer for that. But again, when you get down to Big George, you can only dig it so deep. You gotta have the flow, and like I said, it starts out there at Judy Workman's. Goes south of town, comes right through town, that's where that district is, district number three.
How many things have been added to that drainage though?
Oh, there's several thousand acres of tiles that's been added.
Changed tile, at south of town.
Big tiles down there.
And I think that new subdishes have ended up dumping into it too. I mean, you got, as I, we do have a lot of people flooding on actually.
GSI's tall, I mean, it's an issue.
Yeah, I just wondered.
But it's not, is there anything we can do? It's not really something the city can do.
Yeah. But I guess it's not, if we're looking into it, we're gonna kind of go back, but, and thank you for your insight for a really.
But can't they, you're gonna stop them about when? And can't they put some lock to at least hold it back to keep some of my dirt in my, I mean, if it's going, half my place is not getting in a dumb ditch, are they gonna pay me for it?